For single-family detached homes with the remaining lot used for detention and a private road, which will be maintained by the owners of the three single-family homes.
Now.
I'll, uh...
Alderman Wesley?
I'll take that motion, uh, second that motion. You made a motion, right, to approve?
No, I've asked for a motion.
Oh, okay, I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Okay. Question?
Uh, do we have the presenter here today? Uh, I have a couple of questions, concerns on this project. Uh, I don't know where to start with this one. Uh, my concern is... Roger, do we have the map of this subdivision up there, please? Well, I'm gonna get started with the question, if you don't mind, Chairman. My first question is, the, the private drive, private road. First of all, how many homes are going to be, according to this, there's three homes? Four homes?
And at the end of this roadway, there are two additional existing homes.
Okay.
And there's an easement that will be given to them for that. So the maximum that this roadway would serve would be five homes total. These two homes that are already existing that are to the east of this project, and then these three homes.
So the two homes that are already built over there will be in responsible for that private drive, too?
No, no, no. This, basically, this roadway...
You'll need the, you'll need the microphone if you're going away from that one.
The three homes there along, the three homes here, these three lots, this private roadway will serve those.
Mr. Chairman, we do read broadcast, he can use the, might get the podium or the portable. Portable, maybe.
Yeah, probably portable, if you have those. Thank you. Basically, what we're talking about is that this driveway will service these three. There's an easement right. It will end at this point. This road will be put in from Wooddale Road along the front of these three, these three lots. The driveways back here for this property and for the other property will tie into this. The roadway will be here, and then there'll be private driveways to the two houses in the back. But this roadway will be put in to all of the city standards as far as the roadway, construction, and so on and so forth. It will be built to equal or better than the city requirements for a roadway.
So, if you don't mind...
Go ahead, please.
So what you're saying is those three houses are going to be responsible for that roadway?
That's correct.
For repairs and all that?
That's correct.
All right, well, first of all...
There will be an association set up, and they will be responsible for that, as well as the maintenance of the detention area that is also part of this fourth lot. And they will be, that association will be taking care of this. The two homes in the back will have access across it, but will not be contributing anything to it. Only these three lots will be responsible for the maintenance of that roadway.
All right, the drawback I have on a private road, and I, and we have seen it, I believe we have seen it in the city before, is that when the house change ownership to another house, first homeowner buys it, they know they got the thing to pay for the roads and maintain the roads and all that. And then they move out and the next group comes in. How are you going to guarantee me that the road's going to be kept up by the private provider? You can't guarantee me that.
Yes, well, we can, because there'll be an association, a declaration, that will be part of the deed that they actually take title to. It will reflect that that property is subject to the rules and regulations of that association. That association will have enforcement rights. And we've even gone to the extent, if necessary, the prior associations that I have set up, I've worked with Pat Bond, City Attorney, that can even provide, if the city would require it, particular provisions that if the city should incur any cost, although it's very unlikely that they would, that they can go after the individual homeowner should something of that nature arise. But in the most cases, that will be part of the association. They won't buy this unless they pay, they're aware of the association, they pay the assessments that are set up by the association. And so it's just like buying into a condominium. If you buy a condominium, you can't say, "Well, people that secondary or third buyers aren't going to be paying the association dues." They would have to do that. This association would have all legal rights to enforce the collection of that against the homeowner. You also have to understand, these homes are going to be in a price range of $800,000, $900,000. Anyone that's going to spend that kind of money on a home, on a full-size R1 lot like this, is most likely going to be very concerned about maintaining access in and out. We're going to put some nice landscaping out here along Wooddale Road, that's all going to be part of the association. So that will contribute not only to their access and physical use of the property, but also to the value of their own property. So they have every vested right to be able and to want to maintain that association and contribute the funds.
Okay. May I do a follow-up with that, Chairman, or did you...
Please do. Alderman Wesley?
I'll lead.
Okay, Alderman Coles.
All right. We have an, uh, an association right now that's complaining about a private road that they have in now, and they were here to a meeting the other day, and they were complaining to me about a private road that they have to take care of. And also, uh, there's a retention pond, which is on Elizabeth Drive on the corner. We're having trouble to find the person to clean that up. Now, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna make three people take care of a road and a retention pond? No way. There's no way that thing's gonna go. And another thing that I don't like is where is the fire department gonna turn their trucks around? If they have to come in there with a, with a big truck, which is, they have a one that, goes up pretty big in case they have, how are they gonna turn it around? That little bit that you have on the end of that, which is 14 and a half feet, why is it gonna be enough to turn a, uh, hook and ladder or any of them around? So you're gonna use a private driveway to turn it around? I think you, you're designing this thing wrong, and I, I'm, I'm going to go against it, period.
The roadway is only 345 feet. It's basically...
The roadway you hear, you have is, according to this, is 26 feet across.
It's 28 feet curb-to-curb, and...
Well, my eyes are blind, then. I see 26.
It's basically about 345 feet this way. And again, it's up...
I'm talking about the end, on the end.
You're talking about this, this was...
That's it.
This, this particular...
That says 14 and a half feet across, according to my drawing.
That's, that's correct. And that was...
And how is that gonna turn a truck around?
That was designed, we had the city engineer review that, the city engineer indicated that that was more than adequate for most vehicles.
Vehicles, not trucks.
The only vehicle that cannot actually do that, and we've had the fire department review this plan, and the fire department had no objection, they felt that this was, and they recommended that it would be approved. And the only fire truck that can't is perhaps the long one, and again, we're talking about a short distance of a backup of 300 feet maximum that they would have to back up should that occur.
Into Wooddale Road, backing up. You ever try to back into Wooddale Road?
Well, I'm sure...
With somebody doing 45 miles an hour?
Remember, these, we're talking about an emergency vehicle as opposed to some other type of vehicle.
Okay, I'm still against it.
Anybody else? Alderman Winger?
I, I'm not sure that I can tell in here, in terms of the trees that would need to be removed, how, how many are they? Where are they?
Well, that would depend on where the houses are to be situated, and again, we would only remove the trees that we would absolutely have to do, and that would be basically contingent on how the, the property was actually laid out with the construction of the home. I mean, where, the size of the house, again, we're trying to get a subdivision approved here, we're not coming in with actual building plans, and that would be something that would be covered under when building permits were actually issued. And we're still, you know, certainly willing to comply with all of the tree codes and ordinances of the city. That's certainly nothing that we're asking for any exemption from.
Okay.
Are you changing the elevation at all?
I can ask the engineer to address that question.
My name is Alex Ho, I work with Gabriel Group Engineering. I'm the engineer of record on this project. Uh, yeah, the existing site is very flat, and to address the stormwater runoff, so that we get all water to Wooddale Road, we have to raise the grade in the middle, and then we're also adding storm sewers to collect all the off-site runoff to direct it to Wooddale.
About how much would have to be raised?
Uh, the existing grade is elevation 709. The proposed top of foundation is 711, so at its highest for the, for the house, it'll be 1.5 feet higher than the existing grade.
So you'd, even if you weren't pulling a tree down, you'd have to raise the ground around it by two feet?
Yes, one and a half feet.
One and a half.
Maximum.
Alderman Caddala, you had a question?
A few, actually, if, if I may.
Please do.
Um, let me pick up on where we left off with some of the other comments on the private road. Um, first, perhaps staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but based on our current zoning ordinance, we've really got nothing on paper to, to, at this point, to, to deny a private road. Um, okay. Here's why I think a private road is a bad idea, but once again, we, we have no legal document to say that we, we can't deny based on the fact that in and of itself, it's a private road. Um, I think, now, I was not on the city council at the time, but I've been watching these meetings for a long time, if I remember right, we've got some fairly angry residents on Florina Court. Uh, every once in a while, about every six to 12 months, I think it comes up, the developer to the west of them would really like to connect that, that new road into Florina Court. I believe Florina Court was a private road at one time, and it may be a city road now. Um, is that, is this information accurate so far? Okay, now...
Actually, Roger, I don't think that's right. Florina has always been a public right-of-way, as far as I'm aware.
It's never been a private.
Has it always been a public?
It's not, not, never been private.
No, we plow it in everything.
Always have?
Yes.
Since it was built in the early 90s, okay.
Yes.
It, it is the Timber Lane, not the, not Florina Court.
Uh, well, it's Timber Lane that, that developer would like to connect to Florina Court, and it's the residents on Florina Court who say, "Please don't do this."
Correct.
Okay. All right, so perhaps that has nothing to do with the fact that, that, obviously, that was never a private road. That's gonna be an issue that we'll, we'll have in the future, anyway. I'll get to why I'm, I'm, I'm going in that direction in just a minute or two. Um, the, uh, the, the other issue with a private road is that the cul-de-sac, we can't enforce that that, that happens. Now, for some reason, the fire department, uh, does not seem to have a problem with that, and while I believe you, and I believe the fire department is, is more, is a more appropriate source to make that decision than I, it, it still seems peculiar to me, and it still seems an unsafe situation. Um, I also think if I, I think I understand that if this were a public road, we would have to maintain some kind of a, a right-of-way or easement to the, to the south of that road, between the road itself and the forest preserve presenters. Does that sound accurate? If this were not to be a private road, if this were to be a public road, would there, would there be a easement or of some sort required between the edge of your property and, and the forest preserve property?
No.
So, how about, how about staff? Question to you. Could this, could this be a public road being built right up against the property line like it is shown here?
I believe that the only, uh, the only situational problem there would be where the utilities were going to be placed. I do believe that the south edge of that road can be placed on the lot line. Is that correct, Gary? Yes, it is.
Okay, so that's not a problem.
So we don't need an easement on the south side of that road?
No, not, not according to, uh...
19-foot is...
Unless there were going to be water and sewer placed there, then you would necessarily have to have an easement in that particular area so that you could service those utilities.
I'm sorry, Mr., Alderman Caddala, please go ahead.
Mr. Holm, please, clear something up here, yeah?
The road we've only talked about recently, Montclair, south of the S curve, the west curb line, the west back of curb is the forest preserve property line. Uh, all of the utilities on Montclair either fall in the pavement or on the east side of the street. In this case, if this were to be a public road, the ordinance would require the 66-foot right-of-way. But we could allow the road to be at the very far south end, there's nothing preventing it being at the very far south end of that right-of-way.
Okay, so it, the, what's in question here is a 66-foot width of the, of the right-of-way itself?
That would be further than that.
Okay.
You'd have to ask for something less.
Okay, which, which would effectively reduce the individual lot sizes, which would effectively make them less than 150,000 square feet and, pardon me, a 15, sorry, 15,000 square feet, and would no longer qualify without a variance under our R1 zoning ordinance?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so, so I, what I was getting at, what I was trying to get to was find the reason why this is even being presented as a, as a private road, and I, and I believe, I may have just found that. Um, I believe it was two years ago, or somewhere around there, that Mr. Klein first presented this project to the ZBA when I was on it, and we were pretty adamant that this is, uh, annexing into Wooddale, so it automatically becomes R1 upon annexation, and it's surrounded by a large lot. So we were adamant that it remain R1. So I believe what's happened here is the developer has found a way to make this R1, but he's had a, he's had a push and pull and tweak some other things, and, and what's happened here is we've ended up with a private road because we don't have that 66-foot right-of-way available to make this project work anymore. Um, my concern about it being a private road is that I see the potential for, at some point in the future, perhaps the distant future, the, the two homes to the east. At some point, those people may move away, sell to a developer or whatever, and we might want to, somebody might want to put more homes in there, and then, uh, they would probably want to connect this road to, I believe, the next north-south artery would be Cedar. Uh, what happens, question to staff, what happens when we've got a private road that, that may want to grow and then connect and become a through-street? Is it still okay? Is it still a cul-de-sac situation if that remain a private road? Or would it have to become public? And where are we with the lack of easement for the right-of-way?
Physically, they're proposing a road that would meet city standards. So to the common driver driving down the street, it would appear as if the road has met city standards. From an access standpoint, or, and I'm not gonna put on my legal hat, but there would be no public right-of-way there, so there would have to be something worked out, perhaps right up front, that would allow for public access through that road, and I don't know how to, I don't know how to, to make that work.
Okay, but the, the other part of that was, okay, so that, so the theory is, is that, you know, with, without attorney counsel here necessarily at this point, there's not necessarily any problem with a road becoming a through-street and may, and remaining a private road, or even a part of that road?
That, that I...
If you don't know for sure?
Yeah, that I don't know, 'cause you're asking the access issue question. Physically, the road's gonna be built to city standards, and, and so from that perspective, it would work out just fine, they would simply extend it to the eastward.
Okay, so if I can just wrap my lengthy conversation up here, may I?
Please do.
Thank you.
Yes.
Judging every project on its own merits, um, I don't, I don't like private roads, I don't like dead ends without full cul-de-sacs, but what we've got here is, is a request to build R1. And that is enough for me to, to be able to vote yes for this project. Um, there's the give and take, but like I say, I mean, and, you know, in general, I'm not, I'm not happy with private roads, and I may even want to see if it's possible, seeking legal counsel. We're hopefully at the beginning stages of rewriting our zoning ordinance to possibly eliminate the, the availability of that option to future developers. But as it stands right now, without, without that in black and white, and with the fact that we got R1 here, I'm, I'm okay with the project as presented.
Let, let me ask the mayor then a question. If, as Alderman Caddala said, the people in the back east part of it sell their property to a contractor, and the contractor puts the road through to Cedar, and this part is private, and the other part would be what, public, private? How would, how would that work?
Uh, it could be either. Could be public or private, depending upon what the other developer proposed. Obviously, there's gonna be incentive on the homeowners' association part to dedicate it to the city at some future date to relieve themselves of the responsibility of maintenance, so...
So this is a, this is a problem with private roads, we always have. But we do want some nice houses built here. Uh, I, I have another question, too, that Alderman Caddala and I were talking about. If you extend this road east, it comes out at Cedar at approximately Juniper Street. Now, it, it, I think it would make sense for the future, for, for this project, as well as any future projects, that whenever we're going to have a road that is the same latitude or whatever as another road in town, that the name of the street should be the same. Uh, if, rather than naming it something out of the sky, it should be named Juniper Street with the numbers associated with where it's at, so that later on, if that road does extend out, it will be joining up with Juniper Street, so we don't have a confusion, which we do in a couple of places in town now. Go ahead, Alderman Coles, you had a question about that?
Yeah, you can't, you can't join, join that with Juniper. That's a forest reserve in between there, from Cedar to Montclair, that's a forest reserve.
Well, okay.
That goes all the way down to, uh...
Okay, what I'm saying, though, is even if it can't be joined onto it, it is the same latitude in town?
Yes, yes, I'll agree.
And I think the name should stay the same, so that if someone is looking for a street they haven't, and we make up our maps, they, it's more logical to have all the streets in one latitude, the same name. Uh, Alderman Felice, please, go ahead.
Just a question. The property directly to the south, is that forest preserve property, then?
Yes.
So it's not property that's ever gonna be developed, or...
That won't be touched. Do the, do the owners of the, uh, is it okay if I ask if the owners of the property east of this project are here? If they wanted to mention anything, state any, make any comments? I guess now either they're not here, or they're, they don't have any questions about it. Okay, another question I have is, do we have assurance that the road you put in is going to match up with the road that is already there, so there's not a six-inch drop-off or something between the roads? Yes or no?
Yes, it'll match up.
Okay. And, uh, when is that road actually, you're talking about putting in a road that's as good as what we put in the city, which sometimes I wonder about, but it's, uh, going to be put in when? Before the houses are built? After the houses are built? When is the road put in?
The road will be put in, I'm the builder, and the developer's Scott.
Pardon me?
I'm Scott Klein, the builder, and, uh, the, uh, the road would be put in, in, complete, except for the top two and a half inches of asphalt, which would go in when the homes were completed.
Okay, so the, the road would still be open to the people...
Oh, yes.
...that lived to the east of there...
Yes.
...while the construction was going in?
Yes, yes.
So any trucks coming in there could not just sit in the middle of the street...
No.
...while they're working on it?
No.
Except just drop-off at that hammerhead or whatever?
Yes.
And then you will finish the road once the houses are finished, so that you have a clean road, because the people there have just, it looks like just recently resurfaced that street already, and I'd hate to see them having difficulty getting out of their homes if, if you, you know, while you're building.
Yes.
Uh, the landscaping you're talking about between the retention pond and Wooddale Road, how, how wide is that area?
It's about 20 feet.
Is that large enough for any decent trees, not counting just shrubs or something?
Oh, yes. And we are gonna try and keep as many of the trees that are, that are left there right now. And that 20-foot there is to provide a screening for Wooddale Road, uh, and that detention pond that's there is a shallow detention pond, it's meant to be very beautiful. It is, uh, the southern entrance to Wooddale. Um, the residents there are very sensitive to that. So the trees that were cut down already were the trees that were either diseased, uh, we didn't think were gonna make it, or we knew would have to be removed, and we are gonna try and save all of the trees that are left. We certainly won't be able to do all of them, but we'll save as many as possible.
And the retention pond sewer will go from the retention pond through that area out to the city sewer along Wooddale Road?
Yes.
And that won't inter, you'll, you'll put the trees in, so it's not gonna interfere with that sewer?
Yes.
I would hope.
Yes.
So the only question I have then is, is again, by raising the elevation a foot and a half...
If we have to put wells around the trees, we'll do that. We'll do our best to save the trees. Um, I, I love trees myself. My grandfather built a house that's just south of the forest preserve there, so I'm well aware of the area, and I'm pretty, there's a few people here that know me, I try and save the trees.
I'm not sure, are, are there any oak trees over there, or are those the ones...
Yes.
...that have disturbed the roots?
Most of them are oak.
So those trees will, if they're within, what, 20 feet of a house, or maybe even more, will probably be damaged, anyway?
We'll, we'll do the best we can. All we can do is try and save them, and if, you know, some of them will die if, it's almost if you look at them, and some of them, we've had, in my career, we've had homes that we've built that were very close to oak trees, and they've been fine. So we'll do the best we can to save as many as we can.
Alderman Coles?
I got one, one question. I don't advise that to be called Juniper Street, 'cause Hiawatha, you got Hiawatha that goes, goes, disappears, and then it comes back out on Cedar, and it's only a block long, and people come down the street and they see, "Here, I'm looking for this address, and I've been up and down Hiawatha, and I can't find it." It's because they didn't go over to Cedar for that extra block. The same thing with Maury. Maury only, we got Maury on our street that goes one block, that's it. And then on the other side of Cedar, it goes all the way to Wooddale Road. So it's, it's, that, I would advise that he puts a name, another name on a street than Juniper.
Well, if, if that is so, I would like to have the city council consider that we be naming the streets in the future. Mr. Mayor, please go ahead.
I would strongly encourage, we never do that again.
No, sir.
If you may recall, there is still a lawsuit pending over that subject, actually.
That's, that's not because we...
No, let them name your own street.
That's not because we named it, it was because, never mind. Alderman Winger?
Thank you, Alderman Shaki. First, a comment that I don't have a problem with the, uh, private road. I actually live on a private road, it works okay for, for us, uh, and, and it's actually less that the city has to maintain, so I like that aspect. Uh, the other, uh, the other item, though, procedural question for, for staff, that, do I understand correct that the actual removing of trees wouldn't happen until we actually issue a permit to build the R1 home sites?
That's correct, Alderman Winger. They would have to supply us with a proposed site plan and tree preservation plan prior to issuing the permit. We would have city services staff review that, if need be. If we needed to have an arborist review, we could do that as well. And we're going to know what trees are gonna stay and what are gonna be removed at the time we issue the building permit.
Okay. And then a follow-up, uh, that with the petitioners agree for, for the trees that, let's say they're in the footprint of the home, or, or of the trees that we know need to come down, are you willing to, to replace those trees with new trees? Once you're built?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alderman Wesley?
Yeah, I, I still have a problem with the, I know the fire department signed off on this, John. My question is, you, we need to address this, because any development now, the fire department's signing off on, we had the Madonna property, we made and put this huge turnaround in that development, okay? Why can't we be more consistent? If we do it in one location, it should be the same way, regardless. You know what? I mean, we got the problem up at Polte now, that we had put no parking signs up there because they didn't put wide enough roads on, around there. We need to address this issue about this, and we need to get on the same page, or else we're gonna make the decision, the fire department ain't gonna have a say in the matter, because that's wrong, because we made Madonna property, there's just, we took a whole entire house, maybe two houses, I'll make that big cul-de-sac, because we're required by the fire department. Now here are guys coming in here and not requiring it. And Polte didn't require it because with, the fire department signed off on it. It's our call, far I'm concerned, on the roadway. I mean, I don't think we tell one development, "We're 90 feet cul-de-sac in, this guy don't have to, this guy don't have to." Get on the same page on this. Now, could you answer me a question, why, how the fire department signed off on this Why, how the fire department signed off on this one, and what was the reason why they signed off on this one?
I cannot answer that, because I have not spoken to the fire district as to why they approved this. I mean, and certainly, the control of a cul-de-sac, or a turnaround, or a subdivision is certainly up to you as a council. That's why you make the big bucks doing this. But as far as speaking for the fire department, I can't. I would have to talk to them and get back to you as to why they approved it or not.
But here's the thing. It's our decision, make this decision with this turnaround for the fire department, okay? Well, then, if that's the case, then why is the fire department approving it? If we make the decision up here, and the building department should make the decision. That's where I'm trying to draw the point here. We telling one developer they got put in 90-feet culvert sack, and now, you know, we've got the problem at Polte up there. There's a problem here. And I don't know if it's between our building department and the fire department or not. And I, you know what? I'm not bitter with them at all, and I'll take totally honest with you. I'm not trying to nail the fire department. But if it's our decision to make the decision on the culversacks go in or not, then why are they even considering or sending these letters out, saying they're good enough? I mean, that's what I'm trying to draw here. I mean, how could I make a, how could I make a good decision tonight, knowing that now the fire department's sending a letter, "We approved this," okay? But when we did the Madonna up there, they had a plan that wasn't narrow for a culvert sack. But we go ahead and tell them, "Oh, no, that ain't approved. You got to go with this gigantic one." That's the problem I have, okay?
Alderman Coles?
All right. We made several of them. We made Carrie's make a big turnaround on Elmwood. We made Kara on his development with two of them, one on one end and one on the other. Even Polte, even though their streets were small, but at any end of their street that was a dead end, we made a, I think, a 55 or a 50 swing around on each end of it. So how can, how can the fire department say okay on this? That's... I can't, I can't figure it out. And he's right. He's right. And we've done it on all the projects... Wait a minute, till I'm done. We've done it on all the projects that we've took in, that's made a, that has to have that big end. And Ethan Woods had to do it, all right? Now, Mr. Klein, I have a little bit against you, because I talked to you personally when you built the house at 260. And you said, "Oh, I'm going to put in a pipe over here, and we're going to fill it in." Well, I went over to see the person after they bought the house, and I stepped off the back door, and I almost fell in the ditch, because you didn't, you didn't put the pipe in, and you didn't fill it in, which you said to me, "I will do it." Now, this is another thing that I have against you. You say things, but you don't do them, okay? That's, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Roger, Mr. Noack, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to just hopefully have one last quick comment with regard to the road layout and the cul-de-sac. Oftentimes, the cul-de-sac and the road layout is predicated on the size of the development. The developments that we had talked about, as previously been approved with varying sizes of cul-de-sacs, are quite a bit larger and much more complex than a three-lot subdivision with Mr. Klein is proposing. And that's something that you have to take into consideration.
So then, what you're saying is, then, the fire department shouldn't even look at this, a three-lot subdivision? It shouldn't be in their hands, then? What you're trying to tell me right now?
For the purpose of public safety, we want to know from those individuals if, in fact, they're going to have a problem for ingress or egress. And if it affects anything with regard to life safety, we're not going to support it if it is in the negative side. We have to deal with what we get from them. They're the experts in the fire service on life safety issues.
Alderman Winger?
Thank you. I do have to agree with that, that it does seem that the, that the turnaround is, should be commensurate with the size. Like, this is a three-home subdivision, so I can see why the fire department did approve it. And because they feel that they can get their emergency vehicles in, at least, and it's three. And I really wouldn't want a huge turnaround anyways. I would just encourage people to come in and turn around and then go the other way. Or I can think of La Joco by the train station, the seven-unit subdivision. I think there's a smaller hammerhead there, and that's the access in and out. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
A question to Roger, I guess, on the subject of the cul-de-sac. Is the planning here, or is the anticipation that at some point the property to the east is going to annex as well, and the road will get extended further?
Yes, I believe so, Mayor. That was discussed previously this evening, and there were very, some very good comments from both the city council as well as the city engineer with respect to that. And hopefully, if that situation does work out, it will work out for the benefit of all the Wooddale residents living in that area.
Any more comments? Then I will ask for a motion to enter... Oh, Mr. Klein?
Regarding the fire department, I did meet with former fire chief Ron Herf, and also with Scott Schneider, the assistant fire chief now. And they said, when I was concerning the turnaround that's on the drawing here, they said that would accommodate all of their vehicles, with the exception of the large truck. And what they do in a situation like that is they back the truck back out. They have no problem with backing it out onto Wooddale Road or any other road. That to try and find a way to, in a subdivision this size, to turn that truck around is very difficult, and they didn't seem to think there was going to be a problem whatsoever in backing it out onto Wooddale Road. It is a very small and limited subdivision. So those are the comments that both the former chief made, as well as Scott Schneider. They didn't appear to have a problem with it.
I do, I personally do have to disagree with what they said, because that road curves at that point, and we've had a fatal accident over there, because people come south on Wooddale Road, and if you have somebody tearing along quickly, and you have a truck backing out, they're not going to, they don't have time to see it ahead of time and time to stop. If they're exceeding the speed limit, they're going to hit that truck, so...
I think when they were talking about it, it's with the big truck, which has the emergency lights on it, and if they were there with the big truck, they would certainly have a lot...
But it's a blind, it's a blind curve. There's no way you're going to see it. Alderman Wesley, and then I'm going to call the vote.
Well, then, then the other thing, then, if this is the way we're going to do this, then I think the fire districts should come every meeting that we approve for culvert sack and explain it to us. Because, I'm sorry, it's not, it's not fair to developers. I mean, we got, you know, we approved Polte up there, okay? All I hear up there now is that they can't get the fire truck in there. But they signed off on it, okay? There's a problem there, and it needs to be addressed. It needs to be addressed on any development come. You know what? These letters of them signing off, they had a meeting with them. Did we have a meeting with the fire department before this letter, or did we just send the plans over there? Do they get the plans, and then they approve them, or do we meet with them, or these people met with them personally?
They, both the developer and the fire department, I believe, had met, as well as the assistant chief had come into the building safety division and met with staff. And this was after all of their review had been completed.
Alderman Wesley, we do have items to be done in the future about the zoning code rewrite, so that's something that we'll have staff consider at that point. We do have a motion on the floor.
What was the motion?
The motion was to recommend to the city council that we approve a request for Klein Homes Incorporated for a four-lot subdivision of the property located at 5N021 Wooddale Road, to construct and use three of the lots for single-family detached homes, with the remaining lot to be used for detention and a private road, which will be maintained by the owners of the three single-family homes. That's the motion. The minute taker, please call the vote.
I ran a second in that motion, I believe.
Yes, I was. There was a second.
There was a second? I'm sorry.
Okay, and a question?
Last question.
Okay. That included in that motion is that the developer will replace any removed trees.
That's what the building department will make sure is done, correct?
On that site, or...
That's one of our ordinances, and will be done automatically.
I would disagree, because I believe the way the ordinance is currently written is that if the trees in the footprint of the, of where the house would go, then they're allowed to take those out and not replace. So I made the request to the petitioner that they would replace all the trees that they need to remove.
Are you talking about a certain-sized tree, then? Or are you talking about just something two-foot high?
Well, it, I agree. It would be good to stipulate the size of the tree.
Three-inch diameter, for instance.
But I...
Would the motion maker please approve that? They change and add that? Who made the motion?
Wesley.
Wesley, would you...
I didn't make the motion for this development.
Yeah, you did.
Chalky has the motion.
And you, you made the motion. Yeah, it's been that long.
Well, no, because now I have a question on it. Because simple reason, I believe our ordinance states, if I am mistaken, if they cannot place the trees back on those properties, that they make the donations for tree replacement anywhere in the city, replacement on our Parkway project. I believe that's the way our ordinance is written.
Is that the way it reads, Mr. Noack? Mr. Forrest?
Alderman Wesley is correct, but Alderman Winger had discussed, when she was making her comments, with the developer with respect to the footprint of the dwelling. And typically, those particular ones are not required to be directly replaced, but she and the developer had worked out that he would place additional trees on the site, the ones that are taken out because of the footprint of the home. But that can't be determined until they submit the building plans.
So that's in there?
That's in there.
Okay. So if you'll take the vote.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
No.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
I'm going to vote no against my motion.
Alderman Chalky?
And the vote is? Fortitude to approve. It is approved. I'd like to make a statement right at this point. Doesn't have anything to do directly with what we just talked about, but the city of Wooddale does have a strategic plan that was put in place June 7, 2007. And it says here that it will be the policy of the city of Wooddale not to allow one person or a group of persons to represent in any way the official position of the city of Wooddale in regard to any existing, future, or potential development. No person, no one person or small group can represent, nor should they create the impression they have the special authority. The council, city council must assess each potential opportunity based on its merits at the time it is presented to the city council by city staff. And I expect that to be followed exactly in the future with any future projects. Does anybody have any questions about that? Okay, I said it. It's done. Next item. Next item is a report and recommendation, case number 07-SU6, Toda Motor Works, a special use at 370 East Irving Park Road. The petitioners, Toda Motor Works, DBA, Alternative Mobility Solutions, are requesting a special use to allow for the operation of a 3,000-square-foot orthopedics and medical appliance store, which specializes in the sale of handicapped lifts and vans which contain handicapped lifts. The site is at 364-372 East Irving Park Road. Are there any questions? Before I make a motion.
I have one question. Is that the building, first my memory, is that the right next to Ready Electric? Is that the, used to be a tutorial building?
Yes, it is.
So they are going to have a van pull in there and do these lift things?
It's going to be a display room with vans and lifts.
Yeah, but I also thought they were also pulling them in to install lifts on there.
No, no, sir.
Okay. I misread that, then. Thank you.
As a matter of fact, part of the motion will be that this is a special use permit and subject to the conditions that no appliance installation or vehicle servicing will be conducted on-site, and the occupancy to serve as a showroom only, because it is special use. Okay, as long as there's no questions right now, the chair will entertain a motion that the committee recommend to the city council that we approve a request for the special use at 370 East Irving Park Road to allow for the operation of an orthopedics and medical appliance store, which will specialize in the sale of handicapped lifts and vans which contain handicap lifts. And again, no appliance installation or vehicle servicing to be conducted on-site, and no occupancy, or the occupancy would only serve as a showroom. Do I have a motion? So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, do we have a question? By the way, that storefront there is Ready Electric, and then there's a storefront back away from the street further, and these two storefronts where they want to move in, the center ones, and then a storefront to the west. Now, I understand from Mr. Noack that the other two side storefronts are occupied.
That is correct.
Chairman? Even though when I stopped by, there was nobody there, and I couldn't even see in the window. But I'd like to have you check that, because I think we're supposed to be able to see in windows.
Occupancy immediately to the west of Ready Electric is an individual's business office, and he only uses it occasionally. The one on the farthest west is a landscaping office, and they are not there that frequently either. They just do their bookwork whenever they need to, and that's basically it. That's probably why you don't see anybody there.
They should have a sign or something saying what it is, because there's nothing to indicate that anybody is occupying those spaces.
Sometimes they don't want to be known.
Oh, okay. I see. You don't have to know. Any questions, then? The minute taker, please call the vote.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Chalky?
Yes. The motion carries. Next, we have an informational item. Property maintenance issues updated by the community development code enforcer supervisor.
Yes, Chairman Chalky, if I may, at this time, I would like to turn the microphone over to John Forrest, our building administrator. I believe he does have a few words to introduce.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This evening, you will view a PowerPoint presentation prepared by code enforcement officer Joe Johnson, some of which will be outside the realm of what is usually associated with property maintenance enforcement. When property maintenance enforcement is mentioned, the initial thought is typically tall grass, weeds, messy yards, vehicles parked on the grass. But tonight's presentation will focus on enforcement proceedings like those I mentioned, but will also include ones that are typically kept very low-profile. These types of situations can be very time-consuming, and many times end up with citations being issued, court proceedings, and occasionally structures being posted unsafe for occupancy. Many times, the conditions you'll see are discovered by observations while driving to inspections, or while on a premises or in a premises, conducting other types of inspections. Occasionally, anonymous complaints come in, or other departments or agencies will make us aware of these conditions. The claim that a man's home is his castle has validity in the court systems today. The argument that someone should be able to live in whatever conditions they want to creates a fine line between what standards government can impose or not impose on an individual. What constitute life safety issues? What constitute unhealthy sanitary conditions? What constitutes an unsafe condition for emergency responders? Is staff enforcing the codes with the proper legal interpretations? Is staff following the direction of the city council? Is staff following the direction of the city council? These are the type of decisions staff makes in the field on a daily basis. At times, this can make it difficult to enforce property maintenance standards and gain compliance. We are unable to enforce what may seem like a good idea to a reasonable person. Only the minimum standards contained in the codes are enforceable. Staff has been met in property maintenance inspections with an entire range of emotions from aggression and anger to despair, and occasionally what almost seems like relief. There are times when some of our elderly residents find themselves in the position of being unable to care for themselves properly, and either have no family, or no family close enough to be able to lend assistance as quickly as needed, or a family that really doesn't care enough to get involved. These are the times when staff interacts with the DuPage County Health Department or DuPage County Senior Services. On several occasions, track, staff has had to track down distant relatives and get them involved for resolution. There are times when staff has to apply Vicks VapoRub to their upper lip in order to overcome foul odors. We all carry jars of those in our glove compartments. There have been times when staff has to wear hazmat clothing and breathing apparatus, also carried in our vehicles, for protection from unsafe conditions. I've witnessed incredible compassion for those in need, not only from staff members of our department, but from the police department and the fire district as well. You, as a city council, should be very proud of staff that's put in the position of having to resolve some of the situations you'll see documented tonight. Names and addresses will be withheld. Since our usual and customary procedure is to notify only the aldermen in a ward where non-compliance situations are encountered, we thought this presentation would demonstrate to all of you what staff is involved with. Each of the photos to be presented is indicative of other similar situations. Keep in mind, it's just a small sampling of the total cases addressed by our department. The conditions you will see are not isolated to any ward, but these and similar situations have been discovered in all wards in the city. As a point of perspective, staff conducted, or has opened, 531 cases in 2006. That's not inspections, that's separate address cases. This year to date, there have been 417 cases open that are categorized in the property maintenance scope. These are aside and apart from our regular building inspections. At this point, I would like to turn things over to enforcement officer Joe Johnson. But I will warn you, some of the photos you'll see are graphic, and you may find them disturbing.
I just one question before you get started. You said last year there was 531 cases open, and this year there's 416.
Correct.
How many of those cases are now closed from 2000, from last year? And how many cases are closed or still ongoing? Or would that be part of his presentation?
You got a percentage, Joe, or?
No, I don't have a percentage of what's closed. But from last year, from 2006, those numbers do not carry over. They're new numbers from 2007 on, it's 417.
So, right now, you're saying we got almost 940-some cases still out?
No, they're not all open. There's so, many, many, many of them are closed. I don't have that number.
You don't have that number. Thank you. But I would like that number down the line, please.
Yeah, that's easy enough. Okay, yeah, that was a great introduction from John. So, what I am going to do is just go through some slides of the things that he talked about in his opening presentation there.
And your name is?
Joe Johnson. Thanks. We're going to start out with the more routine cases that we encounter every day, tall grass. Things along this line that we post, get people to mow, might have to get the city to mow if they're vacant properties. We'll go ahead on to cars that are parked on lawns, which is constantly going on in town.